It did turn on, but I can turn it off.
You do it. There you go.
We got it. I turned it off. We're good. Team effort.
Ben Stanley, can you hear us? Ben, can you hear us? Maybe not, Alice. Hey, Ben Stanley, can you hear us?
Yes, Commissioner, I can hear you.
Yep. All right, Commissioner Gargan, I just did your job.
You did a fantastic.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we got you.
Great.
All right, we will call this meeting to order, the Board of Commissioners for Utah County, July nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We typically start these meetings with a prayer, reading or thought, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. We'd like to take volunteers. Do we have anybody willing to do a prayer, reading, or thought today? You would, fantastic. And then after that, Pledge of Allegiance, someone be willing to lead us in the pledge. It's usually the easy one. Loyal, you will? Okay. So ma'am, if you want to start, you can tell us your name and then lead us in a prayer, reading, or thought.
My name is Deborah Miller, Vanoy. I've been married just recently. Oh, my goodness. Here to talk about conservation easements on ag properties, but I'd like to start with a prayer. Thank you for giving me that opportunity.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I'd like to have an inspiring come to you in prayer today and ask for wisdom, for open minds, and for understanding as we work as guests, public officials, and staff here at the Utah County Commission Meeting. We thank you for all the blessings you give our lives. We are so grateful to live in this beautiful state. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please repeat the pledge after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. The first thing that we'll do is we'll build our consent agenda and regular agenda so that people don't have to stick around and wait for that. Let's look at items one through eight.
I'd like to hold seven.
Okay.
Brief discussion on that. And number eight is a duplicate of seven, so we just strike eight.
Okay, so hold seven, strike eight. Okay. And then.
Table nine through fifteen till the twenty-sixth.
Continue.
Continue, excuse me.
Yep, continue.
I even wrote, "Continue." Sorry.
Nine through fif- fifteen.
Sixteen.
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Yeah. Okay. And then on number twenty, we need to update the deadline to say August third, two thousand and twenty-four, instead of twenty-three. It should say twenty-four on item number twenty.
Good catch. Good catch on that one.
Okay, and then twenty-one through twenty-nine.
None for me.
None for me.
All right, none for me. And we have no closed items. Is that right, Paul?
That's right.
Doing so good, Paul. Keep up the good word.
I am curious why we continue nine through fifteen.
The grants team would like more time to review it.
Oh, okay. I remember we sat through that with the mag folks.
So it's just making sure that we've
Got it.
done all of our internal audit work that we need to do for that.
Okay.
Okay? We don't anticipate any issues, so we should be fine next week. All right. So you want to review that with us, Alice?
You bet. Okay, I have us holding number seven, striking number eight because it's a duplicate of number seven, and then continuing for one week, which would be July twenty-sixth, items nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and then approving on consent number twenty with the correction of the date being August third, two thousand and twenty-four.
Mm-hmm.
And then as far as closed meetings, there are none.
So striking thirty through thirty-three. Perfect. Okay. Sounds great. We will now move into our work session. So we have a work session, a presentation from the Utah Agricultural Land Trust on conservation easements for agriculture landowners in Utah County.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I want to thank the Commission for allowing me to be here today. I appreciate it very much. My name is Deborah Vanoy. I'm a founder and board member of Utah Agricultural Land Trust. I'm going to talk today about a concept that is gaining fuel in the western states because of development pressures primarily. And this creates an opportunity for ag landowners to preserve their ranching and farming way of life and put a conservation easement on the property. I'll go into more detail, recognizing that time is precious here. Let's see. You may be aware that there are four or five land trusts in Utah. We've got one up in northern Utah in the Cache Valley area, and then a couple here in the central part of the state.
Ready? Quick forward, please.
Forward. What's a conservation easement? It removes rights from the title of the property for certain uses. These are easements that are on private lands. The land remains in the ownership of the landowner. However, an easement is placed on the land, and that easement is held by the land trust. That's kind of the mechanics of how it works. They're a legal document. They're filed at the courthouse. The details are worked out between landowner and the land trust and a team of attorneys and accountants. The process takes about two years, so it doesn't happen quickly. And this is predicated on the fact that the family agrees that the land will be held. The land will have a conservation easement placed on it. There's no argument about that. I want to also say that for those ag landowners who want to sell their property to developers, that is their right in this country, and we don't argue with that. But there are some who want to continue within the ag, productive ag world, and this is an option for them as well. You can go forward. It limits future non-ag uses, but encourages ag enterprises. You can construct buildings on the property that are related to agriculture. And when a property goes into a conservation easement, there are annual monitoring visits whereby the land trust team goes onto property and confirms that everything as it was when the agreement was made. So annually, they are on the property to observe the activities. It does not provide immunity from condemnation or eminent domain. If the policing function of the municipality wants to impose eminent domain, that usually holds up. So that's one concern. But for the standard efforts to develop land, the developers will pass it over because it does have a conservation easement on it. You can go forward. Again, to protect natural and ecological resources, I don't know if you're aware, but there is a lot of good that goes on in agriculture. You know, in today's world, we hear that seventy-five percent of the water used in Utah is for agriculture, and indeed, a lot of water is used for ag. However, when you keep land in its natural state, including ag, the rainfall that does fall is able to go into the aquifers. The open land sequesters carbon, so the air is kept cleaner. There's a lot of value to keeping land in an open state. Then, of course, there's public access on the private land for things like cross-country skiing in the winter, hunting, outdoor activities, walking the periphery of the ag land. And, you know, we have a property in the heart of Cache Valley that is surrounded by development. We're hoping to get that property protected because that will allow small children within an urban center to see what a farm is, something that's so foreign to many children in a more urban environment. They don't see cows in a pasture, sheep grazing. It's foreign to them. So if we maintain that even in areas of high density, we would do our best to do so. Go ahead. Utah County did a little bit of research. The statistics show that there are lots of new and beginning farmers in this area. You know, the whole trend of small farming is becoming very popular with young people who want to then sell their wares at farmers' markets, that kind of thing. My husband and I are now buying our beef from Utah producers. Not from supermarket. We want to support local, and that's an opportunity as well. But we discovered that the ages of the farming in Utah County is younger than in many areas, mostly pasture land, mostly forage hay, and interestingly, surrounded by large populations. That is going to make the value per acre high because of the local urban population nearby. Two thousand and twenty-three, what kind of a world are we living in today? As you know, after COVID, we all wanted to get out, and some people went so far as to buy RVs and ranch properties. And that's been happening ever since, you know, COVID began. So there's an eagerness to be outdoors. This really doesn't relate directly to the farmer himself, but it kind of shows you with the general population how they see open land and agriculture, seeking more farm-to-table, more interested in that kind of thing, and wanting to buy the local, the fresh. And I don't know if you know, but a lot of our livestock and beef is processed, processing is owned by foreign entities. A Brazilian company owns about ninety-eight percent of the beef processing in the United States, including JBL. China has a large hand in the pork production and ownership in this country. So we've made that commitment in our family to try to buy local and buy from the independent farmers and ranchers. Okay? What kind of ag land qualifies? Significant farming operations, that's key. Smaller parcels, maybe it were a twenty or thirty acre parcel, but if it were close to a scenic area, that's going to have value for a conservation easement because that's the public benefit aspect of it. Again, green belts along road sides preserving scenic views, and then water, riparian areas where you've got water rights and that type of thing, and waterways, that's valuable for a conservation easement. Historic value of property. We have a lot of third, fourth generation farms and ranches in Utah. They go back to the pioneer days. There's value in that. You also have Native American ancestry on some of these lands, and that's very, very valuable, too. So that's important. Wildlife on the property. We're working on a grant right now with the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation to raise funds for the rangeland, the Rocky Mountain Rangeland Grant, and their whole focus is elk and mule deer, and the aspect of rangeland having populations, herds of wildlife on them, and sage grouse as well. So that's very important. Go ahead. So the benefits to the farmer or rancher. I'm here today to help you understand how this process works, and this presentation goes to farmers and ranchers as well as elected officials. The farmer and rancher can sell their development rights to the land trust. So we raise money to buy their development rights, or they can donate their development rights to the land trust. And for that, they get federal tax benefits, and I'll show you that in a minute. They keep ownership of the land. In fact, they can sell that land for ag at any time. Their children and grandchildren can do that, but now it has ag value, not developable value. Okay, go ahead. Just to give you an indication of the financial model, the value of the easement is the difference between the developable value and the ag value. And if you look at that, developable two point seven million, undevelopable ag value one point seven, the value of the easement is one million dollars. If we entered into a negotiation or an agreement with a landowner, and that were the ag value or the easement value, that is what we would have to provide them, for them to sell the development rights to us. And it can take a couple of forms. It doesn't always have to be exclusively purchased easement. It can also be a combination of the two. Okay, go ahead. The tax benefits are attractive. Up to fifty percent of adjusted gross income can be deducted from federal taxes and carried forward for fifteen years. These are federal tax breaks for the ag landowner. If that ag landowner is a long-term, full-time farmer or rancher, that's one hundred percent of his adjusted gross income can be deducted for fifteen years. And the reason of the difference is you've got folks coming in, and they're not really doing ag on the property, but they want to give a better benefit to that historically ag person. Go ahead. So this is just to give you a schematic on that, or a breakdown. A family making one hundred and fifty thousand in gross annual income, they can carry forward seventy-five thousand dollars. They can take a seventy-five thousand dollar deduction and carry it forward fifteen years to the one million dollars. I didn't change that number. To get to the point where the conservation easement value is used up in the tax dollars. Okay. This is a really interesting table to take a look at. We're talking here about a Texas ranch, so we're talking about large properties, unusually large and large values. But this is more about passing on the property to heirs and what the parents contribute to the passing of that property when they turn it over to the adult children. Without a conservation easement, if you look down at the bottom row, the adult children are taxed at quite a high level. But with a conservation easement, you see the eleven point two, and the joint exclusion by a mother and father, each one permitted to have twelve million in exclusion. That gives them twenty-two million. Their taxable estate is only three hundred and eighty thousand. Their tax at thirty-five percent is one hundred and thirty-three thousand compared to four million dollars if there's no easement on the property. So that's kind of profound. There's huge tax savings to the heirs if there is an easement placed on the property. Go ahead. This is an example here in Heber Valley. It was completed, I believe, in two thousand and twenty-two. To give you an idea of a combination program, a fifty-seven acre property went into conservation easement, and you had three sources of money. One was the Wasatch County Open Space Fund. They donated almost eight hundred thousand. The Utah Open Lands Land Trust donated one point eight nine, and the ag landowner donated one point one million. So he was able to take that deduction on the one point one. So it was partial purchase, partial sale of the development rights and partial donation. So that allowed him to take some tax breaks. Go ahead. Land remains and productive livestock and cropland. Natural resources are supported, as I mentioned, water, carbon sequestration, and wildlife. Open spaces benefit for all. We all like to see open spaces as we're traveling along the roads and the highways. Food security for Americans. We might not think that's important, but it is. And in a time of crisis in our country, it really will be. So, you know, that's an important consideration, too. Go ahead. My inspiration is my grandfather. He was a dry farmer in northern Montana. He ranched. He raised beef cattle and raised wheat and barley. And I love the land, and I admire and treasure those who work the land. So that's why I'm here, trying to preserve it. And my goal here was to just educate our elected leaders on this opportunity. I'm going from county to county in Utah, and with that, also educating the ag landowners on this opportunity. And I thank you very much. I'm happy to take questions.
How much money do you have currently in the trust that would be available to buy these rights from tag?
Well, we were founded in March of this year, so we're in the process of raising money. We have applications out with the National Fish and Wildlife Fund, with the Lee Ray McAllister Fund, and then we'll be going for Department of, US Department of Agriculture funding as well. And that's going to be related to a property that we are working with. They have twenty thousand acres in Boxheller County, ranchland with a lot of wildlife on it. And so your efforts to raise are related to a project.
Okay, so you don't just, in general, try to raise money from philanthropic organizations? You specifically identify property first and then raise money for that up?
The foundations will help us with our operating expenses, the indirect costs. But then the ones I named, Lee Ray McAllister, National Fish and Wildlife, and the Department of Agriculture, that's really for project-based. So we don't have any money yet. We're hoping to get it. I feel very confident with this property that we will be funded. And then that funding is reserved. It doesn't come into our account for us to hold in escrow. It's reserved for when the deal closes, and then it's released to the landowner.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think that's great. You have a story to tell from the Heber Valley. That's critical.
Yes.
You know, and I've had these conversations with my folks, obviously. And one of the questions that comes up frequently is, are the children able to build a home on the property?
Great question. That typically rests with the county and with the community zoning.
Okay.
Yes, because it's happening in Cache County where we live as well, where you can see the children are building on the ag land, and, you know, each one of them is within an acre or so of the other. So it rests with the local jurisdiction.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You had mentioned that ninety-eight percent of the beef and large percentage of pork processing are done by other entities outside the United States, but the presence here, how much of a presence do you have in Utah?
Well, JPS is here in Utah. I'm sure it's large.
Okay.
And when the local rancher delivers cattle to JPS, we're eating local beef, but it's being processed by a company owned by a Brazilian firm.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. I sure appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming.
All right, we'll move on to our regular agenda. I think we only have one item that was held.
Number seven?
Number seven.
Yeah, we might not have a conclusion here, but I'd like to look at other options. The problem with this is that counties are beginning to move toward parity. Salt Lake County, Weber, I understand are parity. I don't know about the others. I believe Davis County is moving that way, if they haven't already. The reasoning behind this was if we have a lower-paid lawyer defending someone accused of certain crime, that lawyer may not have the skill set because he or she was able to accept that level of pay, and they're facing prosecutors who are tending to be far more, their pay rates are far higher. And so what we have is that we have this disparity of expertise against less than expertise that's desirable in the era trying to have equal protection under the law. And so we have to find a means to fund the increases necessary in order for our public defender to retain the lawyers they have. They have been losing a few at a time this year. There are two of them here from our public defenders if we need to ask them a question or two. We have some funds from the general fund. We have some left over from ARPA, but I don't know how much that is. I don't know if that's enough because I have two amounts to cover what's necessary for this year. But for two thousand and twenty-four and going forward, we're going to have to address that as part of our budget discussion on a permanent basis. And whenever we discuss the county attorney's office, we're going to have to concurrently take in view of the public defender office. And this is coming at a crucial time. So if we have, we don't have options, a firm option on financing, so I don't know if we can approve this item. But again, we have roughly four hundred thousand dollars left over, maybe four hundred and five hundred thousand left over from the ARPA that we've received. We have used that ARPA fund for VOKA grants for the Children's Justice Center. I forgot how many positions we funded with the county attorney's office. I think it was three or four. And yes, those are all temporary fixes to a long-term need. And we did the Children's Justice Center for initially a one year, and then given the fact that the federal government has not come to terms to replenish the VOKA grant, we extend it to the end of twenty-six. So these are Band-Aids only. They're not permanent fixes, and I recognize that. I feel that there's a need to address this sooner than later. We again have X dollars for ARPA, but if we must, we can maybe do a mixture of, we have, I think, thirty million that's not accounted, not, what am I looking for? Not in, under some kind of commitment in general fund. And if we must, we could tap into that to cover this year. Again, we'll have to address it for the following years. So I'd just like to have your insights on this. So I'd just like to have your insights on this.
I know when we've done increases this year, there's, HR gives us that analysis, right? And is there a need to ask them to then do a more comprehensive study as to, you know? We have comparables that you've shared earlier, right? The parity that Salt Lake has and other counties. But that was kind of a question that I had was, you know, where exactly, you know, are all of the comparables for this-like position? And is that on us to ask HR to do that analysis? Or is there someone that has already done that? Do you know? I don't know if, I don't know who that's a question for. I'm not sure if that's for Paul.
I don't know if HR has because I think we would have to ask them to, just because these aren't our employees. If they were our employees under the county, we would have that.
Yeah, so like earlier this year, right, when the county attorney asks, says, hey, here's where I've identified money and here's how it all shakes out, right, with the help of HR?
Well, and I think that that's important to note, that we had in the budget adjustments for our employees, right? Like, the adjustments that we have voted on have been within our budget. And the county attorney's office decided to do something new that was outside of what we had budgeted for. But they found the funds for that within their existing budget, eliminating other positions, reducing other overhead. And that's kind of the difference here is that that's why, even if we voted yes on this contract today, we have nowhere to transfer the money from because it's not currently in our budget. Whereas the other, the other things we have voted on have been in the budget.
Yeah, the general fund, we'd have to have, we'd have to open the budget in order to transfer this. Correct.
So one thing that I do want to point out, that you mentioned three counties, Weber County, Davis County, and Salt Lake County. Weber County's county effective tax rate is 0.87%. Davis County's is 0.72%. Salt Lake County's is 0.75%, and Utah County's is 0.59%. If we had even the nearest one of those, we'd have a 13% increase over, a 0.13% increase over what we currently have. This would be a no-brainer. We could easily afford that. If we had the tax rates of those counties, affording this would not be an issue, right? So that's, I mean, that's why when you look at comparing us to other counties, you have to compare apples to apples. If you're looking at general fund monies, percentage of population-wise, we have significantly less. Literally, if we were to just take the median of those two, not even Weber County at 0.87% or Davis County at 0.72%, if we were to match Salt Lake County, it would literally be a 50% tax increase, right? And so looking at those within parity also, our sheriff's department deputies make less money than Weber, Davis, or Salt Lake County sheriff's deputies. Our elected officials make less money than Weber, Davis, or Salt Lake County elected officials. Our assessors' office employees, our recorders' office employees, every one of our employees in Utah County makes less money than Weber, Davis, or Salt Lake County employees because we are taxed at a significantly lower rate. When we look at opening the budget and pulling more money out of the general fund, then we have to look at balancing the budget. And part of balancing the budget would be raising the tax rate. So you have to ask yourself, would you be willing to vote for a tax increase for this?
We, I haven't finished the evaluations. So I can't get a yes or a no on that.
So that's where I would look at it. I mean, I understand absolutely where you're coming from. I see the plight. To me, it's no different than when we sit in front of our sheriff's deputies and our sheriff's deputies look at us and say, "Am I worth less to you than every other officer in every city in our county and in every sheriff's department in every other county?" The absolute answer is no. I think we have phenomenal sheriff's deputies. I think we have a great sheriff, and I think that our employees do a phenomenal job. But are you willing to vote for a tax increase to pay for them to have a pay raise? And this is no different. The other pay raises were figured into our general fund. They were figured into our budget. This one was not.
Correct.
So to be clear, in order to fund this in the future, if you find the money, you would have to do a budget adjustment, which requires a public hearing and some notice. So we couldn't do it on really short notice. What's a notice? Is it two weeks? For, I'm not sure what the notice period is for a public hearing. But there is some notice period. I don't know it off the top of my head. So we'd have to think about it a little bit ahead. And from our point of view, that's one of the things to think about. Even if we get a grant, we still have to change our budget to reflect that in a budget process. And you raised the point, too, if we're funding this initial step with one-time money, we have to be thinking about next year, how are you going to continue to fund that? So there has to be some longer-term thinking involved as well.
So with that, I wanted to make this a discussion item and bring it out. Any thoughts from the public defender's office? Ben Young, who's our financier for that organization?
Thank you, Commissioner Benjamin Young, financial manager for Utah County Public Defender Association. To the point of parity, yeah, the ask here is to match the increase in salaries that was given to the county attorneys, acknowledge the budget constraints that the commission is facing. And, you know, as the Utah County Public Defender Association, we're very conscious of the budget restrictions and obviously only bring items before the commission when their needs. The increases that we've seen in other counties have made it difficult to retain the high-quality employees that we've put so much training and efforts into retaining. And so it's scary for us to see that, obviously. And then to see that an increase was done on the county attorney's side, which acknowledging that deputies in Weber are paid different than deputies in Utah, we're not asking for the pay rates that are being paid to Weber defenders. We're asking for the pay rates. As Weber County's defenders are paid in parity with the prosecution, we would like the public defenders, defenders to be paid in parity with the Utah County Attorney's Office. And like I said, we try to find funding outside of the county whenever possible. Agenda item four today was about 1.8 million of funding that we brought through the IDC to help offset costs related to it. Anytime that we can bring funding from outside the county, we always try to do that. But, you know, this is a need, and so we've brought it to the county to ask for help and what assistance can be provided. So, thank you.
Sorry, I just want to add a couple things. My name is Josh Esplin. I'm chief counsel at the public defender's office. I've been there for 15 years. This is not a new situation that we've been in, in the 15 years. Every time that this has happened, the county's been really good at, you know, coming back up so that there is equal pay. And I would say, I know a lot of deputies, they do a great job. Elected officials, you do a great job. The mandate for public defense is from the Constitution. It's one of the few constitutionally mandated things that is supposed to be funded. The state of Utah has, unfortunately for you, passed that on to the counties. And that's what they do. But it's statutorily based. So it does put us in a little bit different situation. And I don't know, the question about HR, I know we did go and visit with somebody that talked about that. I don't know if you have specific questions about that or what it is that you're looking for. I'm happy to try to answer that as well as any other questions. But where we're at right now is that we have lost a number of attorneys, which, you know, in the years past has not been typical. And the market's, I think, you know, obviously to blame for that. And it's been difficult to find replacements. You know, I actually, now, since I've met with Commissioner Powers Gardner, we've had somebody leave. I've had to take on another calendar day, too, to try to help, at least in the time being, until we can kind of get something going. We've had people that have wanted to work with us, but we are not able to offer a salary that, you know, is competitive enough to have them take that. So the continuation of this is actually worse, right? If we end up losing so many attorneys that we can't actually fulfill what we are obligated to fulfill. And then that leads to a lot of different issues that were probably for that time. But that's the concern we have. It's not, you know, us crying here because we're not getting paid equally. Well, that is hurtful, but, you know, it's more of, we need to be able to fulfill what we want to do. And that's difficult when you can't offer a competitive salary. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, the data isn't yet finished. So we've got maybe another month to see where our negatives are, if it's still tracking negative another month from now, two months. But it's something we have to address. And whenever we, in the future, speak about county attorneys, we have to make sure we also speak about the public defenders in the same breath. So that way, we are addressing both organizations equally in the coming years.
I would agree with that.
Was that, sorry, was that the thinking last year during the budget process, like as you approved the funds? I mean, we're having this conversation, right, because of what the new county attorney, you know, did, giving raises to his office, right? And so now we're having this up. But you have that, you had that conversation last year, right?
Well, during the budget process, it was considered. Most of this came down in this legislative session in January after the budget was already set. The legislature gave the attorney general's office employees 30% raises. And then in turn, and that was in January, and then in turn, Salt Lake County gave their attorneys 20% raises. So this has all happened since the last budget season.
Okay.
Yeah, I mentioned the state reps, that one, that happened at the state cap. The frustration is that they've got a larger bucket than the counties do, no matter which size county. They hold a much larger pocket, and so they can draw a larger price tag for their people. And that's a little disconcerting.
Now, with that said, in theory, no, that hasn't always been considered, right? In 2019, when the county attorney's office was given 17 new employees to the tune of $2.5 million, the public defenders weren't considered at that time, and we had to fight it at that time in 2019 to do this. So it's been reactionary in the past from the county. It hasn't always been considered, right? But it really should.
That's what I'm learning, is the new kid on the block, I think, right? Like, we got to make sure that there's repercussions to this.
Yeah, we need to consider the public defenders as one of the county offices, and their people are county employees.
And the same is true. The same is true when we add additional positions to the county attorney's office. If we're adding additional prosecutors so that they can prosecute more cases, then there will also be more cases that need to be defended. And that is not something that traditionally past commissions have looked at parity with, but we absolutely should.
That's helpful. Thanks.
So as a Band-Aid, would the ARPA suggestion work for this venue for the rest of this year?
I didn't even consider that. That was my main question, is what bucket of money does it come from? So I'm not sure.
I would say there's two issues with that.
I had 4.1 and 4.4, and so I don't know where we really stand, and 3.6 might have been called for. So we have to see where we are.
That's what I was going to say. So after the CIP last week, we left 3.4 million in ARPA, which, if we fully funded everything. But we were willing to fund the 3.6 and spend $200,000 out of the general fund to cover some of the CIP projects. So is there money in ARPA only if we don't do a youth services agreement? If we do a youth services agreement and we have the CIP that was voted on and the contracts were voted on last week, there's no more money in ARPA. So that's issue number one. Issue number one is that there isn't money in ARPA any longer. Issue number two is using one-time monies to cover ongoing expenses. Now, we did do that in two areas. We did that with victims' witness coordinators, and we did that with the VOKA grant. But in both cases, we made those grant-funded positions, meaning when the grant is over, those positions go away. Now, is there a chance that we can find ongoing funding four years from now that covers that? I sure hope that the sales tax softening that we are feeling right now doesn't last for four years. Yes. But in this case, we're taking existing ongoing employees and giving them a raise based off of one-time funds. That's a huge red flag in government.
I agree with that. That's why I was saying, this is something, a temporary Band-Aid. We're going to have to address it for 2024 and then moving forward. So it has to be part of the budget structure review. So that I take. So I don't see that as a problem. It's going to, you know, how we address it, how we approach it, that remains to be seen. We'll see what the track looks like between now and another two, three, two months more, no more than that. But I got, the two numbers I got was 4.1 million ARPA before the other program. And I had a 4.4 during our discussion last week as remaining in ARPA. So there's a $300,000 difference. If one costs 3.6, we have somewhere between four and five at the low end remaining.
I think we received an ARPA update from Peter Brown.
Yeah, I saw that. His was 4.1 altogether, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, and there were some recently uncovered things. He hasn't sorted that out yet, but it's between 4.1 and 4.4.
Is that because of additional things that are unspent or is that unobligated?
And are there any of the big clawbacks?
We spoke about that about three hours ago, and I just, I can't remember the details.
So if we just use 4.1 as a baseline, then?
Then in theory, there could be up to $500,000, but we would need to decide then, let's see, did it include?
Yeah, that would run the ARPA bucket dry, of course.
Not only that, but it would, that's one-time funding for one year.
Correct.
For gap.
He's going to, Peter's going to bring something else up to you, if there is money available, another potential area that we could spend it on.
Yeah, we may have some clawback, but that's a may. We don't know that for sure.
So that's something I hadn't really considered, just because of my line of thinking saying ongoing, right? But I understand where you're going, Commissioner Sakovich. So, but if it's, you know, if there's an appetite to do it, there's certainly something on the, you know, I just don't know if there's other, you know, buckets that maybe we need to get with Rod Man's office and really try and identify if it's something we want to pull from.
Yeah, yeah, because with the CIP, we went through pretty thoroughly. The general fund, I know where we are with that pretty much. So I think the general fund, we have, like I say, about 30 million that's not been called on.
And really, it sounds like any actionary items we would need to post an adjustment, right?
Yeah, and if we did the ARPA, then of course we wouldn't have to post or publish an opening of the budget type of thing.
You said, but there would need to be a plan for the future on that. Otherwise, we're using one-time monies to cover ongoing contractual expenses, and that's...
And, you know, the position you're describing in the county attorney's office and the Children's Justice Center, if the grants were to dry up, we are going to have to absorb that in the budget.
No, we would fire those employees because they're grant-funded.
They're grant-funded, but we're going to have to absorb that into the budget because of the services that they provide. There's like 1,000 kids that are treated by CJC each year.
Right, so if I absorb it into the budget, what do you mean by that?
Well, then we'll have to look at where we stand with the revenue. And if it has to be, then it has to be some kind of tax increase, then we'll have to address it then. But that's down into '26 so far. But the point is that those are critical services. They cannot be not funded somehow. And if federal government says, oh, you guys are on your own, like they did with the road tax, where the state wanted the counties to start absorbing some of the responsibility for their own roads. And so we were painted a corner. We had to do that fifth of the fifth, and so we did it. And it's the same thing with VOKA, same with the county attorneys, same with the public defender. And the larger the county gets, as you already appreciate, the more good things will come. But we're also going to see a rise in crime of various kinds, and we just have to be able to fund it. And maybe narrow where funds are expended each year to certain categories of the county rather than all of them. That may be another option. So something like that. So given all this talk, is there an appetite to spend nearly $500,000 to improve the payroll for the public defenders for remaining of this current year through the end of December this year? through the end of December of this year?
If we can find continuity in future budgets, I think it's a justified expense. But we would have to... You'd have to tell me... I'm not willing to spend $400,000 this year just to turn around and have that be $800,000 next year and have no plan on how to pay for that.
Well, that's... I agree with you. We have to have a plan to address that. So I want to watch the... Hopefully, the deficit in the sales tax will not continue. But, you know, hoping is one thing, and facts is another. So I want to see what the facts present. But we have a little bit of a window to start making decisions as to what we have to do for 2024.
Yeah, so I would say two things. Number one is, give us a continuity plan for the future. And number two, let's actually verify how much money is available in ARPA. I personally feel that this would be an approved ARPA use because it's an underserved community. But if we have gap funding this year for ARPA, I would be willing to use ARPA money on that because I think it's important enough. But it would be fiscally irresponsible to do that if we didn't have plans for 2024 and moving forward in the budget. If we can find solid, reliable plans, 2024 moving forward in the budget, I would be okay with that.
Good. I'm the same way, same mindset.
I agree.
There are other options, perhaps.
Yeah, if we can show a fiscally viable path moving forward, I absolutely think we can justify the expense.
I agree with you on that.
And I don't know that I need to waste any... You know, I understand now. I have more clarity on, you know, the balance of, you know, the parity that we're talking about. I don't know that I need HR to do any sort of analysis on... You know, if we give the money to the association, we let them manage it, right? They assess if, you know, where the raises go up and down. And so that answered that question, really, for me. It was just more of, maybe now, of a question with the auditor's office and the finance guys of where they can help us with...
Do we have the ARPA money available? And moving forward, do we have ongoing expenses?
Mm-hmm, so...
Those are the only two things. If we checked those boxes for me, then I'm okay.
And what we need to do is get with the grants team and the finance side, Rob, and have them validate, verify what we actually have. Again, I see two amounts. One says 4.1, and the other one says 4.4. I'd like to know what you actually have. So with that...
We're good. I think we're good to... We can have those conversations offline. I would say, you know, getting the info and moving forward offline.
So does it continue then, or a separate discussion as we have done once we approve our funds?
I would say table the item until we have a timeline so that we don't continue, for Alice's sake, that we don't have to continue pushing it forward and pushing it forward. We have the contract, it's in the agenda system. If we table the item, then we can bring it off the table when it's time, once we have worked out those details. Not knowing if it's going to be two weeks or three weeks. I just think it's easier to table it than it is to continue it.
Okay, let's table it then. And we should have an answer on actual amounts in a handful of days.
Was that a motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second to table this item. All in favor, say aye. Aye. That passes 3-0. Do we have any general public comment? Seeing none, I will entertain a final motion since we have no closed meetings.
Motion to adjourn.
I can second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you, we're adjourned.